We'd like to call this Nibley City Planning and Commission meeting to order for August 29th to 2024, located here at Nibley City Hall. Welcome any visitors that are attending. We'll take roll call this time. Claire Shank.
Brett Swenson.
Kinska.
Troy Rabau.
And also I recognize Levi Roberts and Taylor Kilpak is the Assistant City Recorder. And I'll let Karina introduce herself.
Karina Brown.
And, and welcome everybody. I asked for a general consensus for the approval of the agenda in the minutes from the last meeting on August 8th, the 2028. Okay, seeing there's no objections, we'll accept that. Do we need to make an amendment to the agenda, Brett?
Why?
Your hollow road.
Oh, no.
This check. Okay, let's go ahead and move to the first item on the agenda. Levi, can you lead us into that, please?
Sure, I'll give you some background. Is also here. Asking questions. Give him a chance. So this request. Should have some background, this was forthcoming, is a request to amend the Transportation Master Plan and to remove 2500 South.
Sorry, I'm going to turn this on, so hear me better and hear me online. To remove 20, the 2500 South connection between 1200 West and 1300 West from the Transportation Master Plan. The applicant has provided a concept plan with their application. I'll show that on the screen here, they, they, and they, and they have shown, you know, concepts with this as well as their, their recent requests to rezone the property, which by the way, I mean, that is pertinent to this application, so I'll mention that the City Council did, did approve the rezone and the code changes last week as, as recommended by Planning Commission. So that, so. The, the, but with this application, the applicant states in their application, we're proposing a change to the General Master Plan to create a safer transportation through residential area. And this request has been reviewed by, by myself, city planner, or city engineer, as well as public works. And I'm going to go over and, you know, Tom, Tom Dickinson just, just entered the room and he, and you know, he, he might, he might have some details to add as well, but, but I'm going to summarize, you know, our analysis from planning, public works, and engineering. So just a little bit more background, this is the section of road we're talking about, just kind of zooming in on the Transportation Master Plan. And, you know, that's, for some reason it came in a little grainy, but removing it, you know, that's essentially if approved, that's, that's what it would look like. This is the concept plan that, that was posted with, with the, with the application. So as you can see, at least in this concept plan, it shows, you know, their intention would be to not, not provide a complete connection all the way to 1200 West on 2500 South. They do show kind of a stub road going, or not, I guess not a stub, more of a dead end with going, going into a parking lot and then into a private lane. For, for 2500 South there. This concept plan also shows, you know, an LDS church that we have reviewed internally as, as staff. Hasn't, hasn't been presented yet to the Planning Commission and there were, there were some issues to work through. One of those did, did have to do with 2500 South, but, but I show it today as it was included with, with the application. So just, just some considerations on, on this request and looking at 2500 South and its utility. So in general, you know, provide this, this does, if, if 2500 South is provided as, as shown in the Transportation Master Plan, it does improve street connectivity in the area. And this has, you know, the benefits of dispersing traffic. You know, with more routes, traffic's able to disperse better than if, than if, than if they're funnel, then traffic's funneled into fewer, fewer roadways. It provides direct connection for all street users. So, you know, whether that's pedestrians, bikes, vehicles. There's, there's a more direct connection with, with a better street grid, street connectivity, you know, including. And, you know, 2500 South wouldn't be, would not be an exception to that. It would improve emergency access to, to that area. And that's, that's also related to that street connectivity. Supports effective street maintenance. So for example, plowing of streets is, is more efficient with, with a more connected street grid than, than, you know, when you have these dead ends where you have to back up and when you can, when you can drive, you know, straight through, that's, that's provide more effective maintenance. Just to comment on the dead end roadway and, and, you know, to reminder that this, this isn't approving that specific concept plan, but just look, looking at that concept plan and how it could play out without the roadway. It, it could create safety concerns for fire access and. And this, this comment came from our, from our city engineer, and if you, if you want to, you know, get any more detail on that. We, we can get into that, but, but in, you know, in general, just the, the access is not as good for, for emergency vehicles. So as it would if the road was there. And just in general, when you look at the road, road configuration of the concept plan, there's not, there's really not much, if any, benefit to beyond, beyond the, the development for, for that street network. Providing this connection would provide more of a benefit for, for the community. Another consideration is, is eliminating this 2500 South connection. It may force less ideal driveway connections, in particular, you know, looking at the potential, you know, of future development on, on the, the property, you know, as shown on that, on that concept plan for, for that LDS church. It, it would likely force more driveway connections on like 1200 West, for example, that could, that could be provided on 20, or on 2500 South, which would be, you know, safer, more, more ideal location for those, those kinds of connections. So staff's recommendation is to recommend denial of this resolution. This is a legislative decision in front of you. You have that, you know, discretion. But, but that, that is, that is staff's recommendation with, with findings that really just summarize what, what I already told you about, you know, improving that this road would improve street connectivity. There's issues with fire safety and, and without it, the road can, configuration really just provides a private benefit that doesn't facilitate as good of driveway connections for, for that, you know, for the property on the corner. So, you know, for those reasons, that's, that's staff's recommendation. Tom, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, any more detail, but um, that's, that's a summary of, of what we.
Are there any questions on comments or anything? Some of the things could be mitigated, like the fire access and stuff, a lot of times on some of those deeper, over 100 feet deep dead ends, let's call it, they put a hammerhead turn around and that, that configuration may work with certain turning radiuses as well for fire safety. So there are mitigation ways to do it, but I was just referring to what the concept plan that was proposed.
I have one question for you, Tom. On the 2500 South on the west side, I see it goes, it tees into 1300 West. Does it connect to a road west of that?
Cause it's not showing on the map. South, the, the master street plan shows that connecting from 1200 West to the Heritage Drive.
Yeah, I can see the Heritage Drive, 1200 West, and then 1300 West, and then does it go?
Yeah.
So the only master plan.
You mean?
So, so what's master plan, Claire?
It's, the road's not there yet.
The connection, yeah, so we're just dealing with what's master plan from 12th West to the, the proposed Heritage Drive, which is also a master plan road. That one's not, not constructed yet. I don't know if an aerial would help. We can pull up an aerial and we can show you.
Yeah, maybe I can point.
So you see that little stub of Heritage Drive, there'll be a, there's a preliminary plat or concept plat that's been approved for a, as commercial development there. There's a slight curvature in there, but then it ties into 2600 South to the south. This 2500 South would go from 1200 West to just to the right of the screen and make a connection up into that future road.
Okay, yeah, so you can.
1300 West there is also on the Street Master Plan, that'll just go from 2600 South and connect to that 2500 South per the plan.
Yeah, so this, this would align with an existing road that goes to the, to the east of 1200 West. There's, you know, 2500 South exists there, so it would be a four-way intersection and then tie in over to Heritage Drive.
And then eventually you were talking 1300 West, there's a project that's got through a concept plan, if you remember the Heritage Parkway. I don't know that ever came to Planning Commission, but they've.
It did, yeah. Preliminary plat did, yeah.
So there is a connection down on the south side of 2600 South where the 1300 West would align for a four-way intersection as well.
That helps me see it a little bit better.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What would be the benefit of removing the 2500 South? Or what, what is the argument for removing it?
We could, we could wait until we get the.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. I jumped the gun, sorry. That's my fault.
Thank you, Tom.
Anything else, Levi?
That's it from, from staff.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this moment. Is there anybody who would like? Or is on the sheet?
I don't think that there's any.
Okay. Al, go ahead and.
Hey, thank you.
Say your name and.
Albingham.
Your address for the record.
3334 West, 775 North, I apologize. Someone had to go the UV game. Yes, we were high. So. Um. Anyway, want to hand these out to, given to you, we went out, there's five issues here. And all five of these issues are concerning by building 2500 South. We just didn't willy nilly go in there and say, we want to take this out here. Five years ago, when David Zook was the city manager, he came to us and we were talking about that connection. And he said, you know, this connection is really not useful, really not beneficial to you, so I really wouldn't worry about it. And we'd never, you know, there's been a lot of things that have happened since then and keeps going on, but like, you know, I come back to that and I think, yeah, that's, that's always been true. The other thing that's been pretty interesting was two years ago, the staff told U dot board that 2600 South had no purpose. And so now they want us to build another road that parallels 2600 South. So it's, it's a conflicting issue in here. And, and so the challenge is, so we went out. There's five issues in here, and if you go back to the church diameter there, the stake center, and this hasn't been talked about. We don't have enough room, there's 660 feet between 2600 South and 2500 South, 660 feet. That's not much, two football fields. And so connectivity is already there in these, these roadways. What are we, what are we talking about building there? So the problem we have in there, if we put 2500 South, is we have to expand that roadway extensively. So one of the things that the church has asked that we do is that we have residential homes right next to the church property, because they don't want a stake center or any church in a fishbowl with four roads around it. Now, I know, talked to council about this and, and even they called me yesterday about that and they said, yes, that's our prefer situation, because it provides additional beauty, you know, and I, I get it. I, I wouldn't want a house with four roads around it. So if we put that in there, we can't have the homes in there. The homes won't go. So it really comes down to a situation like this is, okay, if we want the road, what happens to it? Well, there are several other issues. That road has to curve really hard just to get to line up together. And that was part of the discussion that David Zook and I had. Was it just makes such a curvature in there that is a safe issue. And we just had this discussion last year about 2600 South having a connection on a curve. Well, this creates additional, two more curves just trying to align it. And again, it takes out all kinds of things. The other problem it creates for us is cost, the second one. He would cost us about $650,000 to build that road. It's a little bit of money. We don't get reimbursed for that, nothing. The only way we get reimbursed is by selling lots. So just to give you a little bit of know, if you don't know this, when we built 2600 South, we gave the city 4.4 acres free. Free. And we still put in, our contribution to 2600 South is about one and a half million dollars that we will not get reimbursed on. So the only way we get reimbursed on this is development. So basically what the staff is saying, you know what, you can build 2500 South, $750,000, you can add that. Okay, the cost goes additional, but then it creates second issues in there. We lose all the open space for the PUD. It takes out about 31 homes. We went back and calculated. So now we're out not just 750,000, it ends up being about $2.7 million. So not only did we give the land and the road to 2600 South, we're being asked to give all this extra land just for this road. So, you know, anyone else want to pay for it? They're great, they can pay for it. But that's a problem. So the issue comes up is if we have to build that road, we have to put a development there, we can't do the church. That's the problem. It financially, we can't do it. Because now we lose all the opportunity on revenue streams to cover these costs. And it doesn't make sense. I can't go back to, you know, Joel knows that, we can't go back to our family and say, well, we'll do this and give away, you know, more land. I mean, who would do that and cover these extra costs and, and lose the ability to make up? We're still, I mean, it's going to be a long time to make up the cost for 2600 South, but we took that risk. And so we think it's a little bit, it's, it's a stretch to keep asking for more and keep going in there and say, let's do this. So we went in. The other thing we did was hell's engineering, who's a traffic engineer, they do a lot of engineering for U doc. They went and looked at this. And I'll give you a copy of it if you want. And there were several points that he brought up in this. I think there's three pages.
We can, we can, when we get the discussion, we'll.
So the first, if you go back to those questions and the issues that the staff brought up, let's walk through them. Let's go through them. I, I think it's, it's a fair question.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think this is appropriate for a public hearing. This is, this kind of discussion should take place in item number two, in my opinion.
Want to wait?
We'd like.
Yeah.
We can ask questions when we.
Okay.
Technically, we're supposed to use three minutes.
You bet.
Thank you, Brett. Any other? For public hearing? Okay, seeing there's none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to item number two, discussion and consideration of the recommendation resolution. 24 hyphen 20 for the removing 2500 South roadway between 12th West and 1300 West on there. Karina, you could ask your question now.
Oh, I guess I, from what, if, if Al wants to continue, I was just curious about the, the arguments for removing it. So I know he was, he was relaying his arguments for removing it, his reason. So if he has some more, I'd like to hear them.
Do you have any, you'd like to add the arguments, you have the homes will not fit, there, you have to add a curvature to the road and the cost, you won't recoup the cost for building and then you lose the open space opportunities. That's where I got to. Is there anything else you'd like to add to?
So the third thing dealt with emergency access. And so in their analysis from the traffic engineers, it said, in paragraph four, it says, "It is not anticipated the proposed connection would provide a benefit from an emergency services perspective as emergency vehicles may cut through the church parking lot if needed. In emergency scenario, the church access to 1200 West would provide the same functionality as the 2500 West connection, 2500 South connection, my apologies." So that, from, from a point of view, from emergency standpoint, that there's still an ability to access different points in the, in the development. Then he continues with two more points. He notes, and this is, this is a really big one. "It's also worth noting that the connection could result in increased speeds through the residential portion of the development as it would provide a cut-through route to Heritage Drive." So there was discussion, and I mean it, you know, with several people, that the city wanted to put more traffic into 2500 South and take it off 2600 South. So I thought 2600 South was a connector. It was a main road like 1200 West. So the issue of putting more traffic onto 2500 South, you are going to get more speeds, more traffic through residential areas. Now, I've dealt with that. I have a house that was similar to this. That they built a connection through, and boy, the speeds just went right through that. I mean, they're going 40, 45 miles an hour. I'm afraid you would see a lot of issues, because these roads are not going to exactly be, you know, excessively wide, so you can see. But he talks about it right in there, that the speeds, the residential portion of development, as it would provide a cut-through route to Heritage Drive. And I asked one other thing, because I had some questions on this. Held them and I said. Held them and I said, are you concerned that twenty five hundred south, twelve hundred west intersection is simply an access for emergency services? He wrote, no. But he said, the way that it's designed, it's a regular intersection. What I'm trying to say is that the twenty five hundred south connection to twelve hundred, twelve hundred west would provide little to no benefit from an emergency services perspective, since you already have a connection to twelve hundred west that they could use with the state center. So all he talked about was it would actually cut down the time to go between the residential to twelve hundred west by a few seconds. That's all we're talking about. Because there are already enough connections. I mean, especially when heritage drive, heritage drivers in there, you can still go heritage drive and go north. So going north on twelve hundred west, I mean, that that capacity is there. And finally, there's one other note. And we have to deal with this. On the commercial side, and we're dealing with these grocers. They have come to us and said they do not want the connection all the way from twelve hundred west. And I didn't understand why when they brought it up to us a couple of months ago. Well, I understand why. Because they want more traffic going on twenty six hundred south because that's where your commercial retailer is primarily going to be. And if they're going to go in backroads behind the scenes, they said it creates a less valuable situation and less attractive for commercial entities to come in and build or be there. So from a commercial point of view, they've brought that up a couple of points to me that, yes, that is important to keep traffic going through there because you want, you want people to see your your business, not from behind, but in from front. So anyway. So those are the things. And I think from every point, if you go down in there and tends to develop proportions property with the town home concepts, that's true. We've submitted that information. The proposed change again deals with the church, deals with the loss of open space with the law for, you know, it's really the church or on a financial situation, fortunately, deals with the church or the road. The road cannot really be in there with the church. Church would prefer it not be there, but the cost is extremely prohibitive. Now, if the city wanted to pay for it, that's the choice of the city.
Al, talk about the open space. What's your concern there? What? Why is it a loss of open space?
Because if you go back to the map, that road goes right through the open space right there. I'll show you.
So this road is supposed to design like this and go here, we lose this open space here. So then we have to go out. Have to pull townhomes out from other spaces, creating open space in other areas. That's the challenge.
It curves because of the church requirement?
No, it curves because it doesn't align.
It doesn't go straight.
And it creates, I mean, that was the other point that Joseph brought up. He says it creates a curve in a residential area, which is not ideal because it creates a dangerous situation.
So do you have a letter intent from the church?
So they I'm, the council's asked me about this. The church is non-political. We've talked to him several times and they said, we had a conference call back there about two and a half months ago. And right after that conference call, they got on with me and they said, they were very pointed. They said, you know, if that road goes in there, we don't think we can put, you know, it doesn't make it such a great thing. Because there were other issues that, you know, we're talking about turning the church around and having the back of the church facing twenty six hundred south, which I, you know, the church, what the church has is the way they designed it up there is what they would like to have it to be. And that they're going to leave it at that. They're, they don't want to get in any political situation. They're very sensitive.
My son buys, works for the church and buys church property for building churches and stuff. And I didn't, you have a number of signs, so it looks like you have a letter of intent. But do you have a letter of intent or they're still?
No, they're under contract.
They're under contract.
But this is one of the issues. They have the contract.
That could take up to ten years before anything happened with that property. Even with the letter of intent.
With this one?
Yeah.
No, they're looking to, they're looking to move on it within sixteen, ninety days.
So because they read, they survey the area and make sure there's four wards in every building. Unless there's four wards in every building, they will not build a new building.
No, they have told us they want this thing started this year.
And I don't know what, I don't know what the Menden stake has or the Nibley West stake has or the stuff. I only know a couple of churches around it, so.
This is what I, this is not governed for me. I'm not representing the church, but he said they're building twenty five, twenty six new ward buildings in Cash Valley over the next five years.
Yeah, they're slow.
So.
And there, there's a lot of things that need to be done after the letter.
No, this is under contract. So it is intent to close within the next sixty, ninety days. But this, is this a big issue for him? It's, they called me.
They might not do anything for five, ten years, even though they close. Because the, yeah.
No, they they told me they're going to start construction immediately.
Interesting.
So, yes, that's.
Because I've been reached out to and find out about this too.
No, yeah. He could, both of them called me today, Wendell and Trevor and they, you know, the church's stance is very non, they just don't want to get involved with these things and they they just are very, I wish they would.
They're very slow and they do ground surveys and oil surveys and water surveys and the whole work, so. I understand that concept. So I asked my son a little bit about it. What was going on, so?
So they, what they, what they propose is to have it built within two and a half years. So, yeah.
Because this, this one over here on thirty two hundred south stake center was there, didn't happen for over ten years.
I heard about that. No, they, this isn't just one person. This is about three different people said they want to close on that.
That clarifies my question.
I have another question for you, Al. I know you showed with the current plan, proposed plan. You have the road. Sorry, twenty five hundred south on the, on the east side, and then connecting sloping down to where that dead end or to the parking lot, the bottom of the parking lot. Have you guys looked at curving north and going along the property line and then connecting in?
We have. The pro, the challenge it still brings into us is you try to realign that road in there. You keep losing property. I mean, I wish everything was straight like Salt Lake, you know, it was just here and here. But we lose, we do continue to lose open space anytime we feel curve in there.
Sure.
Good question.
Because would, would that require the road to come back down or could it just go straight across? Because I'm looking at the like the roadmaster plan. It just shows it teeing in to the the Heritage Drive. I don't know if there's a specific part in Heritage Drive it's supposed to tee into, but potentially teeing in more north. Does that make sense? Instead of curving back down?
So the the issue of that's a good question. I'll go over. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Am I boring you?
You're good.
So what happens in here? So we're talking about this right here. If you kind of road right here, we still have to build roads down in here. So we, we actually duplicate the process. So we have more roads when trying to build homes. And so I heard you have and some of you guys, you know, the city have homes and ocean spaces in there. Well, that's, that's really it does connect over there.
Okay, I guess kind of more question for you, Levi.
Maybe I can add to that, Troy, just just to tag on that. Typically, you know, developers will want to, if they're providing a road, they'll try to load it with homes on both sides of the road because then they've got twice as many units to pay for it, you know, that's.
Yeah, that makes sense. Does what about? So some of these have, have alleyways. Is is there any restrictions on alleyways? Right? Like if the road moved more north, instead of building roads south of the road, just having these alleyways. And having one connection.
So you can have, you you can put in alleyways as long as it's, as long as it's not the primary pedestrian access. That's the way, that's the way we, it's written in Nibley City code. So you can have a private lane in in a development like this. But you need to have either a trail for the primary pedestrian access or a public roadway. But if it's a private lane, that's really just for parking access.
I've got a question for you. Yeah, this is mostly just about timing in general, and this is, forgive my ignorance, because I've not been around that long or this long. But so are the Nibley City Transportation Master Plan, right on our website, says two thousand nineteen, right? And it's twenty twenty four, obviously, and we're talking about this issue today. I'm sure many people in this room now were around five years ago or a part of this process. So I'm just curious about, again, the timing of all this, when five years ago wasn't that long ago, right? And obviously, it may have just been a matter of timing of when you've realized what you want to do with your property, you know, and in the extent of this development overall. But obviously, like the the process to to develop a master plan and it goes through many rigorous studies and goes through planning commission and council and voted on and while it's not authoritative in in the terms of like, we have to do this by law or whatever, it's a guiding document, right? And so I can, I think you're getting a sense of where I'm going with this is like, why five years ago? And again, it could just be timing on your part. And this is where I I have, I've not been here five years, right? Was this discussed around then, when all this process was being fleshed out? You even mentioned something with David Zook forever ago. I'm just curious how this has been persistent along this amount of time and it, when we've had ample opportunities, I guess, just to say, we don't need this. And why, so why is it still here? I guess is my question.
You know, Nick, I wish things would happen in the day. I'm, I've lost more, more hair than anything I can give, end up in the hospital, but whatever, but when we first started this, we had a, we had to disconnect from Logan because my, our uncle put it in Logan City. And Logan was very difficult to work with. They really did not want us to come to Nibley. They did everything they could. They there's no word to describe it. I mean, it was not good. Between the mayor and the council. I mean, I dealt with that because I was right in the middle of those meetings. It took us a long time to get disconnected from, from Logan and get back into Nibley. So right in that time, about twenty twenty, was when we actually got annexed, disconnected from Logan and annexed into into Nibley. But at that time, it's a great question. Yes, David Zook and I went down through everything because we talked about twenty six hundred south. We talked about twenty five hundred south and how relation it is very close to each other. I mean, they're only six hundred feet apart, six hundred and fifty feet apart. You think of any parallel roads in in any city that that's far, you know, main roads, that's, that's pretty close. And so we talked about it in in the conversation that David and I had, and you can go to David, we we talked about it. He wasn't, he says, you know, that wasn't really necessarily needed to be there, you know, it just depend on the development. What happens in there is when we put the road in there is when the conversation that I had with David was, you don't know what's going to happen. And that's part of the issue is we don't know. And so we just said we needed some flexibility as different people came in and and the city to work with us. I mean, the church didn't come to us until five, six months ago. I mean, we had the design already outlined for this. And so we had to go back to the drawing board to them. Initially, I told them, no, because it was just going to be too difficult. And but I, after they said, you know, this is really needed. You know, it felt like representing the family, this is something that our family really wants to work as a community benefit for the city of Nibley, really. I mean, we could build townhomes there. And you're right. I mean, that initial design would give us a better opportunity to make the money back. This, I mean, this we're not, we're not giving it away. I don't want to get that, but we're doing this more for a benefit to the city, to the citizens. That's really our goal. And I think Joel can confirm that. That's really our purpose is to help out. And everyone likes a spot. The council likes a spot. It's, you know, just making, making things work. So great question.
I have a couple of other questions, I guess mostly to Levi and Tom. Levi, you mentioned with the church driveways, the ingress egress, which were the ones that were the less recommended that you had mentioned?
Maybe I'll let Tom address that question.
In our design standards, a commercial property as it develops is allowed two accesses. And so we were looking at the three that were proposed in the church, but, you know, we're kind of getting off track here. We're looking at the road, but I know we're, there's a lot of focus on the site plan. Right now, that that's a total different issue. But with regard to your question, there's a development on the south side of twenty six hundred south. And then there's also a church parcel that's on the southeast or southwest corner of the intersection there. So that one on the south didn't really line up very well and it could cause some conflicts with the church property. It's, I think it's the Catholic church on the south side. So we asked them to just eliminate that one altogether.
Okay, so just having the two north ones.
The conflicts there. And then we allowed the one on the twelve hundred west and then the one on thirteen hundred west. So by the standard, it's the Public Works Director that determines if a drive access is allowed on on an arterial road. Well, twelve hundred west and twenty six hundred south are are arterial roads and Nibley's done a really good job of eliminating or keeping accesses off those roads. Twelve hundred west is phenomenal. I'm, I'm constructing that roadway now. It's great not having to deal with the conflicts of residential driveways and commercial driveways and having to maintain that road and reconstruct it. It's been a, it's, it's one of the easier jobs I've, I've done on the capital side with regard to that. So I didn't want to be the first one to allow a new driveway on that. But it it's ultimately up to the Public Works Department. You also asked a question on lining that roadway. I, maybe for the proponent, what, it looks like there's already a road on that north side. I can't tell, but.
The private driveway?
The the north side, the north, yeah, right there. It looks like there already is one, but did you have another question on the accesses?
Kind of. So again, all my questions relate to the the fire. Like that was like the main concern, right, from this, from staff was emergency vehicles.
It was one for sure. And I described some mitigation measures that could, that could take care of that for sure.
And then, so I guess since we're on the topic of of the church driveways, is there anything that Nibley has in place that would prevent the church from blocking the driveway on thirteen hundred west?
Not that I'm aware of it. It's private property.
Could block it out.
Requirements for access to the church.
It's private property. We, we can't mandate. They keep that open.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with our emergency vehicle going through a parking lot of a church with activities going on.
Well, when you got a fire?
When you got to a fire. You probably have more people run out of the building to see what's going on.
On the private drives or like snow removal that was brought up, is city vehicles allowed to use private driveways during snow removal?
I, I think we probably have to.
Yeah, I have to defer to the city attorney. I really don't know. I I know it's poor practice. If that were to remain as its design there, there's about two hundred and fifty Um, if that were to remain as its design there, there's about 250 feet from the center of the intersection to that dead end. Either a truck would have to pull back, backwards drive a half a block and then push through or work out an arrangement where they could push into private property. But, you know, then who's responsible for any damage and how far do you push it? I'm sure it happens, but I just, uh, don't know if it's a good practice.
Have to push into the parking lot with the snow removal.
So if, if the city stayed in the, in to the right of way, they would push, right? And block that entire parking lot unless there was an arrangement or responsibility of the city to push all the way through that parking lot to the other end.
And the way, there's no roundabout or anything there. It's how do they, how do, those emergency vehicles are massive.
Yeah, so I described a hammerhead turnaround, that what that would look like is just like a T. They, they, for some reason, fire trucks can't back up further than 150 feet. So they, they would need a place to turn around to go forward out of there because it's deeper than 150 feet.
Well, it's, it's, it's also snow and also garbage.
I hadn't even considered that.
And emergency vehicles and mail trucks are small enough can go anywhere. And so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think just back to, you know, emergency vehicles is a big issue. But in general, you know, street connectivity for an area like this where, you know, the, it just got a rezone to RM 10 units, the acre. And, and that zone, there's a statement in there that, that, um, and I'm, I'm just going to paraphrase it because I don't have it in front of me, that, that focuses on, um, improved street connectivity. The, beyond the immediate site, there's not a lot of opportunities outside of 2500 South, 1300 West for good, to, to establish good, you know, decent street connectivity through this area. There's no connections between Heritage Drive, you know, the planned Heritage Drive and, um, 1200 West. Uh, between Nibley Park Avenue to the north and 2600. So this would provide, you know, one more connection through. There's, there's not really an opportunity to, to, for another connection to the north. It's all built out and, and so I think this would be a missed opportunity if, if, you know, the, the only connection would be at, at the south end on 2600. I, you, you, just in general, I, I, I think, I think that, that street connectivity is important for, for, uh, you know, bicyclist pedestrians going through, but also vehicles for more, more direct connection. Um, we've had, there's certain areas of Nibley that don't have great strong, street connectivity. And, and there's some that we've, we've started to improve upon and the direction we've gone and we've tried to go in our ordinances is improving street connectivity. And I think keeping that connection would be a, a step in, in, in the right direction to do that.
This is another thing that I, I was thinking over through the week. This is about amending the transportation master plan. And we're currently in the works of doing, uh, an active transportation plan, which removes trails out of this plan. I don't know, I guess it would be this plan, but amending this plan to require, if, if, if we're to remove the road, amending also to require that a trail be put through the north side of the property?
Yeah, I mean, that, that can help with, with pedestrian and bicycle connection. Um, you know, we already have a, an ordinance in place for cul-de-sacs. At the end of cul-de-sacs, you have to provide a eight foot wide trail through. So depending on how it's designed, that, that could help cover this, but.
How big's that park approximately?
I'm not sure, I want to say it's a couple of acres.
So it's really kind of a small.
Yeah, you know, it is adjacent to the disc golf course, which is a city park now. The, um, we call it Discovery Park to the north, uh, by the Spring Creek, uh, crossing townhomes.
Okay.
So it'd be kind of thing to that. And, and we don't, we don't know at this point what the intention, if that's city park or if that's, that's, you know, private HOA. We, we haven't gotten that far, but I think that's, that's part of the reason I'm putting it there is it's adjacent to those other open spaces.
Al, go ahead. Al, do you have a comment?
So prior to this, I, I just want to say that this is the right context of this whole thing. So it's not staff requiring a road, it's not staff requiring these, these, making any requirement. We're just following the rules and the regulations that are, that we're faced with. So that, so to change it, this is exactly what's supposed to happen. So I appreciate all this hearing. I appreciate the discussion and the pointed, pointed questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
There were a couple of questions that came up on the connectivity and everything like that. The item I failed to understand is utilities and we've had to deal with that. Uh, there is connectivity here, Heritage Drive is where all, uh, the circular water, the water line is right there. The electrical, the gas. So we have to hook up to those things and we have to have them come down Heritage Drive. I mean, we don't really have a choice because they dead end, all of them dead end right there. It's a property line, so we have to connect to those for this subdivision here. And a lot, mate, you're probably not aware of that, but that's the discussions that we've had with Rocky Mountain, with Dominion Energy, is those connections have to happen. So we, we're not going in there and just saying, well, these things don't, no, we know we have to do these connections to make this thing work. So Heritage Drive will be there because we don't have a choice. Okay, if no one wants gas or we have any heat during the winter, I guess, but that's not going to be the case. You never let that happen. The second thing, on this preliminary plat, I mean, that's a discussion that, that come up down the road and turnarounds on emergency vehicles. I mean, I just bring it up, um, Chairman, uh, what the traffic engineer said was he said, yeah, in case a real hard emergency, you do have Heritage Drive, you do have 1300 West and you do have a church parking lot that if, so it isn't just one spot that comes in there. And so finally, you know, it come back to us. I would like to have you be in our situation to say, okay, go build the road and spend three quarters of a million dollars that doesn't benefit our development. What's the purpose of that? We already got connectivity, we already got 2600 South. I mean, we spent a lot of money, we did the right of ways, we did wider right of ways for 2600 South. So it could be expanded. And then the last thing, and I, I will guarantee 2500 South, if there's a connection there, and this was something that Joseph said, you will turn that into a raceway and it will just have traffic going down in there faster and faster and faster. And it will be a problem. He said, you got 2600 South, it's 35 miles per hour. Probably in here, it may only be 25, maybe 20.
And 26 is 25 miles an hour up all the way to Ridgeline from 800 West.
That, that reminded me of another question that I had.
Right.
The, the roads that are going in here, uh, what is your proposed, the width of those roads, including street parking, if any?
They will be city roads, so they will have the width of a city road. They won't be private.
But including, like, you're planning on, on including street parking or no street parking?
That is still being proposed in the, in the plat map. I think that's a discussion that will continue to, to evolve a little bit more. So I think on the street, the city streets, I think there would be space for street parking. I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, I, I think on the private streets, it would be too narrow.
I'm just thinking about, you know, the, the argument of, of people driving fast, you know, including street parking in there, you know, that definitely widens the road and increases the, you know, the chance of, of cars going faster, so.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, is, is if, if the road is, if the ma, you know, come back to what David said. David said, you know, we have to work on what is proposed. The master plan was put in place before anything of this was proposed. It was proposed years and years ago. That's why we talked to David about it. That's why we went through this stuff. And unfortunately, I mean, he remembers our conversation, I'm pretty sure he does. That this wasn't really an issue, it's only been in the last few months, it's come back to say, oh yeah, we still want this. But the question of it is, is if we talk about connectivity, is it going to supersede the cost, the traffic? The issues with the commercial developer? Is it gonna, the issues with the church? Again, I, the church is very concerned about this. And I don't know if they would stay there. And I'm not saying that is how concerned, I mean, I, I did get two calls from them yesterday and today. What about this? This is a concern for us. Because again, what do you have? You have four streets surrounding the State Center. So anyway, thanks for everyone.
Okay, Troy, have any thing you'd like?
I guess one more question for Al. If there was, if, if we were to amend to where a trail was to be required on the north side of the property, like a 10-foot trail, would that be better or worse than putting in the road?
No, Troy, and I, I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot about that. There is a trail plan to be there. So, um, this design, the plat is not, you know, per se final or anything that we just, you know, put together just to try to give some basic idea of what we're dealing with here. There is a trail plan to be hooked right up into the northeast corner of that subdivision. Yes, and the trail does go around the residential piece, so it is there.
So on the north side or connecting to the sidewalk on the, the streets?
Um, both. Well, I think, I, I think the last one I saw was the trail went down. They proposed 1300 West, circle around, then came back around on the north side of the property. Guys want to go to dinner, I guess.
Nick?
Brett? I do know what, what you're going through. I, I have developed property, I know what it's like to build a road, turn it over to the city, uh, that's part of the deal. Honestly, what David Zook said is irrelevant to me, that's a long time ago. Uh, the church location is irrelevant to me. They can put the church where they want to put it once the development is, 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 is done. Number one to me is what is best for the city. And, um, you know, road curvature, there's an argument to be made that that actually slows down traffic. Uh, it just depends on how it's designed. The open space that you brought up, I think that's a non-issue because it will, it will be required in the development. So, um, number one is what's best for the city. And always, it's when I sit in his chair, I always think, you know, what is best for the city? Because that's who I represent, not what's best for a developer. And I've been a developer, I know what's that, what that's like, I know what this process is like. It's not easy, but I, I support the city's findings. I, I trust their judgment and, uh, in my view, this should be denied.
Okay, I, I understand your concerns and concepts there and the, the churches, I don't know. You look around at churches and you see four roads around churches all the time, but, um, so that's not an issue to me. But I'm, I'm, I think I'm with Brett. I'm more for denial of the, of the road being removed. And, uh, because emergency vehicles are, are important. Unless, if you're the one waiting for it, then that connectivity is highly important. And we are trying to create more connectivity and ease for snow plows and, and maintenance. Keep, because it will actually be over to the city, so. The cost, I don't know how you lower the cost on that. The, the issue with, um, 2600 South past our place is it's a straight freeway to Ridgeline Park and that in the morning is too straight and too, um, wide and too smooth to slow those high school kids down. And so, um, a curvature would actually reduce traffic and, and make it a little bit better. And maybe I need to put up some big speed bumps that I ran into down in Salt Lake or something like that. But, um, that's just my concern. So, um, I, I agree with the staff. I'm, I think that's probably the right move, um, on the development. I don't know what to tell you about the development stuff, but it's been on the master plan for a long time. And so it shouldn't be a surprise because my best friend over here on 3200 South, it's been on the master plan to put a house, uh, road past his house and he was forced to move his house further west so that road could be available. So adjustments happen that sometimes don't agree with the property owner. So. Do we, any other discussions or questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny a recommendation for Resolution 2420, amending the Nibley City Transportation Master Plan, removing 2500 South roadway between 1200 West and 1300 West.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
There's a second from, there's a motion by, uh, Nick and a second by Brett. We'll go ahead and, any other discussions before we vote? And just be aware that Troy, you can vote. So we're missing Tyler tonight unless he popped up. So, okay, uh, no other discussions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, a show of hands?
Aye.
All opposed? It's four to one, the motion passes. Okay. Moving on to the next agenda.
Just, just so you know, it, it should be on the agenda September 12th on, on City Council.
On item number three, discussion, consideration of the conditional use permit for cut and carve CNC. It's an artisan shop at 3021 West, 800 West. And Levi, can you lead us into that, please?
Yeah, so we, we got an application, um, for a, a business license for this artisan shop. The applicant, it's, you know, put detail on his application on, on, on what he's proposing to do. They produce metal and wood slash art science, acrylic and steel cutouts, existing accessory building on the property. And, um, you know, in talking with the applicant and explaining, you know, he gave an explanation about what he's doing there and the, the kinds of equipment he's using. If, if it's the definition of an artisan shop, which is allowed, um, in, in a residential zone. The reason that this is in front of you tonight, um, you know, home, i- i- it's a home business, but it's, but it's in an accessory building and, and home businesses, they, they really can only operate within the, the primary structure of the home. So, but, uh, and, and so if, if, if a home business, you know, in, in residential zone operates in an accessory building, it needs to be classified as, as the use, you know, of whatever that business is. So let's say he was a, um, he was operating a, a salon. That actually wouldn't be allowed in a, in, in accessory building. But artisan shop is listed in our land use chart as a conditional use in the R2. In our land use chart as a conditional use in the R two zone. The planning commission has actually issued some, you know, a few other conditional use permits for this use. This is just to give you a little bit more context and, you know, maybe I'll, so I can point here. Escape out of there. So this is just the, the context. So thirty twenty one south, eight hundred west. Backyard is adjacent to the. You know, where, where they're building a new middle school. Cash County School District property there. And he's, he's proposing to operate this artisan shop in this, in this building. Does have minimal, minimal setbacks. I think it's probably one foot to the rear, three foot on the side, just. Is, is what it appears. But you know, when you look at it, a conditional use permit, it's, it's an allowed use. Uh, with, as long as. A- a- as long as detrimental impacts can be reasonably mitigated. And so you look, look at the. Anticipated impacts, you know, noise impacts. One, one way to mitigate that is to limit the operation of the business to, and, and, you know. Our code specifies the hours of seven AM to ten PM. The, and then the noise can be regulated to, to not emanate beyond the property boundaries. Greater than fifty decibels. And then, you know, just operating within the building is also, you know, a way to, to help mitigate that noise. So. I'll explain all, all the conditions, but all, all of those things are, are recommended conditions. You know, potential dust, when we think about, you know, woodworking. If, you know, provided that it's, it's kept within that shop area, that's, that's a way to mitigate that impact. Potential traffic impacts. You know, consistent with other home, home businesses. A, a way to mitigate potential traffic would be limit the number of employees. So. Um, no more than one that doesn't live at the residence could be employed there. And that's, that's consistent with, 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 um, home occupation as well. Light impact, so we have outdoor lighting standards. So if there's any light, you know, associated with the business, they follow the outdoor lighting standards that can be mitigated as well. So staff's recommendation is approval of this conditional use permit. And I, I explained these, these conditions, but limiting the operation with, with the, with the conditions of limiting the operation. From seven AM to ten PM, um, all, all wood production activities included, storage, storage of materials should be limited to wood shop. Note on the right site plan. I didn't actually show the site plan on, on the screen, but it is in the packet. I just thought it was more clear just to show you the whole context. Um, but, but it's that, that building that was white on there. Um, all noise that emanates beyond the property boundaries associated with pose you shall be limited to less than fifty decibels. Business may not have more than one employee who does not live at the residence, report to the location at the time. And any installed outdoor lighting shall be compliant with Nibley City outdoor lighting standards. Site this, the city code there. Um, that's the conditions, findings. Potential noise related impacts may be mitigated by limiting hours of operation, restricting activity within the proposed building. And restricting noise beyond the property boundary, no more than fifty decibels. Potential traffic related impacts may be mitigated by limiting the business to no more than one employee who does not reside at the address. Consist, consistent, I said, against, consistent with restrictions for home occupations. Potential dust related impacts may be mitigated by operating within the existing building. Potential light related impacts may be mitigated by adhering to Nibley City outdoor lighting standards. So that's, that's it. That's our recommendation. Uh, doesn't appear that applicants here. Was aware of the meeting, but. You can make a. A ruling on this either way.
Okay. All right, we'll open the, the, or discussion, Troy.
How, how does? How would the city enforce fifty decibels? That is extremely quiet. Yeah. So typically this is, these are only enforced if there's a complaint, to be honest. And if, if there's a complaint, we have, we have a device. We can go out and. Measure it. We have done that on, in certain cases, you know, with.
I mean, I'm assuming the CNN, the CNN C is on a table. And it sounds like he's cutting metal, which means it's going to be water. And wood, which probably has a vacuum attached to it inside a building and they're not very loud. To be, it's, they're, they're not like a regular saw.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think like, I mean, the guy's at least doing this for a hobby right now, right? So like, he's already making the noise. And so to fifty decibels is extremely quiet, like that is like what your, your icebox makes.
You probably, you probably hear a low hum.
Yeah, it's, it's super quiet. So. Yeah, I'm, and, and honestly, the reason why that's the recommendation is that's what's within Nibley City code. It's specific to that decibel level. But yeah, it's, it's quiet, but I think, I think the point there is it's a residential area. We want to keep it quiet if it's beyond their property boundaries. And it's, and really it's kind of up to them on how to do that.
Yeah.
How to mitigate that, whether they need to. You know. Insulate, insulate the building better or, or get quieter equipment. I mean, it's kind of.
Yeah, it's no different than here's your zone, figure it out.
Right.
There's the parameters, it's on you to figure it out. So. I, do you have any other questions or comments? I mean, I'm assuming like we've mentioned, this individual is already doing this and no one's complained to this point.
No, I'm not aware of it.
I mean, the only concern I have frankly is like, you know, I've got kids, eight o'clock, school night bedtime. You know, if the machine's not making a noise, it's. Likely materials coming in and out of a shed or whatever, right? Like I get annoyed when my neighbor mows their lawn at eight thirty when my kid's in bed, right? And so, but if there's been no complaints, I'm assuming this person is being respectful, I hope.
My.
Currently.
My guess is he probably programs it and runs it all night long as it draws itself.
Right.
On the computer. So. I'm, I would be guessing. I thought, that's what I would do if I had my CNN. See, run, set up on a big ten foot table and.
Yeah.
It laser cut it.
Now, now the code does state within residential areas. Operation of any, any conditional use is limited to the hours of seven AM to ten PM. That's, that's just.
The only way to regulate that is if there's a complaint.
Right.
Well, he said, on the application, he said CNC machine is fully enclosed in detached building, reducing noise to a minimum. Most projects do not require any hearing protection in the first place.
Yeah, I read that.
I think it's a, I think it's a great. Business idea.
They're, they're pretty cool. My uncle does it in Texas and.
My sister-in-law does it in Southern Utah.
Detailed and gorgeous work. Oh, Brett?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for cut and, and carve CNC. An artisan shop at thirty twenty one south, eight hundred west.
A second. Second. From Troy.
Just a clarification, are you adopting any conditions or findings?
Assuming all the conditions that were outlined by staff.
Thank you, Troy. It's been first, there's been a motion by Brett and a second by Troy. Is there any other discussions before we vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
It's five to zero, so the motion passes. Um, item number four, consideration of a conditional use permit for the Wasatch Animal Urgent Care LLC. At the Small Animal Veterinary Clinic at twenty three sixty five south Heritage Drive. Seemed to be a lot on Heritage Drive today.
Yeah. So this one, you know, I actually looked at kind of whether this really need to. You really need to consider this. There already is, uh, this is where Heritage Animal Hospital is. There's already, there's already a, a vet. Um, operating in the building. However, um, this is a new business and it, and it. You know, a, a, a different business than Heritage Animal and it's, it is operating within the same building. So procedurally, and, and, and it does have different hours of operation, you know, than, than Heritage Animal Hospital. They go later in the night. So that, that's, that's why it's in front of you. It, it was procedurally, it was. It, um, they do need to get a conditional use permit before issuing that business license. Um, but. Just go into a little bit more detail. So where this is, uh, Heritage Drive. Let's see my, my cursor there. This is, this is the building where there, you know, that was, it was built in twenty seventeen. For veterinary services and, and kennel was, was on the site plan as well. And it. They, the, what they're proposing is a, a business that. Really works in conjunction with Heritage Animal Hospital, but after hours, so weekdays, six PM to eleven PM. Or, or sorry, week, week. Yeah, weekday six to eleven PM and weekends, I said Sundays, but it's Saturdays and Sundays, uh, one PM to eleven PM. So just looking at traffic, there, there really is limited additional traffic impacts to, you know, what, what the site already accommodates. It's just kind of beyond those, the hours. So there's, there's not really any mitigation needed there. Uh, there is adequate parking provided on the site. Um, you know, there, there was, there's adequate parking for the full scale. Veterinary clinic and this is, this is, you know. Less staff and, and so anyway, the, the, the parking's adequate. Thinking about noise, uh, it, it will operate till eleven PM and. The, if, if you look at our code and I had, had to look at this closer because I thought that could be a, a challenge. Cause I saw that, I saw that statement that said conditional uses. Can only operate, you know, seven AM to ten PM, but it's within commercials or within residential zones. Within commercial zones, you can limit it within the hours of. Basically from ten PM to seven AM. But it depends on the context and looking at, looking at the site and looking at its context within that commercial zone. Those, you know, the hours of allowing it to eleven PM seem, seem appropriate for that. For that specific site doesn't seem to have, you know, it, the, the noise impacts shouldn't be. Shouldn't be a problem, you know, get, given it's kind of commercial context there. The same statement on light, if, if they are adding new light, then they should adhere to outdoor lighting standards. So staff's recommendation is approval of this conditional use permit with following conditions and findings. So business limited to operate within the hours of seven AM to eleven PM. Any installed outdoor lighting should be compliant with outdoor lighting standards found in Nibley City code. Findings, the business is anticipated to have limited traffic impacts on nearby streets. On-site parking is adequate to serve the needs of the business. Potential noise related impacts may be mitigated by limiting hours of operations within seven AM to ten, to eleven PM. And potential light related impacts may be mitigated by adhering to Nibley City outdoor lighting standards. That's it.
Okay. Or open it for discussions? Any discussions? Troy, Nick?
Good. Yeah, I'm good as well.
Karina.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Wasatch Animal Urgent Care LLC, a small animal veterinary clinic. At twenty three sixty five south Heritage Drive, applicant James Miller.
With conditions?
With the recommended conditions from staff.
Okay, we have a motion by Brett and a second by Karina. Any other discussions? Seeing none, um, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five to zero, motion passes. And we're on our. Last item, the staff report and action items. On there, Levi.
Yeah, um, so just a few things, I, I'd mentioned previously that, that. The planning commission recommendations for the RM zone and the code changes to the RM zone. Were, were approved by council as, as recommended by the planning commission. So that property is, is now. And, you know, within the RM zone, but without all the, all the rec, or all the, um, changes that they. They proposed within the code, other than making them and, and, you know, that property in a, and, and allowable RM. Property. So we have, we have received an application for a. Preliminary plat for, for that. It is an incomplete application, so we, you know, we, we need to work through that with staff and the applicant for. Um, with, with Wesley Nelson Farms.
Okay.
So.
So if it's RM and the church backs out, he can put that in the townhomes?
Yeah. Good. Yeah, that's all zoned that way. The. And another item of note on, on the council, uh, that they, they made so. And this, this will, a, a part of this will come in front of the planning commission soon. Pro- probably, we'll probably put it on the next agenda. So if you recall the watermark property and maybe I'll pull up. This. So they own property north of Thomas Edison. Not too far from Animal Hospital we're talking about, but. The city last year entered into an agreement with, with the developer, the, you know, current property owner there. That if and when they can annex into Nibley City. They can develop that property and they gave a site plan and they, they, they also get that RM zone. Just despite the fact that they're not on the map. And anyway, so, so we, we had that whole development agreement. Well, now, um, Nibley City is, is, is working with Logan City on a boundary adjustment. Which would add them to Nibley City as well as some of the other adjacent properties. Ju- just to line this up, uh, so this is the watermark property right here. There's also the intent to annex these three residential properties. At the same time, so the bound, the boundary in this area for Nibley and Logan would be set right here. Along US eighty nine ninety one and twenty two hundred south. So anyway. Typically with a, with an annexation request like this. The, the, the role the planning commission plays is recommending the zoning for the, the properties. The watermark property, that's already done. That zoning is actually, you know, it's already been approved. And will go into effect. If and when this gets finalized, this boundary adjustment, because we already went through that process. However, there's a, there's little piece here of the Thomas Edison School. And these residential properties that the, uh, you know, the planning commission will need to make a recommendation on. What zoning to assign to those properties. So that's going to come back. Probably on the next agenda, uh, it, it might be the meeting after. They have to wait. Two more months before we can, or we have to wait two more months to finalize the whole process. Because, um, state code requires noticing and. Protest period and, and, and all of that, but, but, uh, the planning commission can make a recommendation. You know, anytime in the interim on, on that zoning. So that'll come back to you. Uh, but they did just the, the first step in the process is, is to. Establish intent on, on adjusting the boundary. And both Logan City and Nibley City Council did that. But it's not finalized yet. It's not finalized till they. Pass an ordinance to adjust the boundary. So they intend to do it, but they haven't done it yet because they, they can't. They have to wait. But.
That's our council or Logan City?
Both, both have to do it. So if either side doesn't agree, doesn't happen. So if either side doesn't agree, doesn't happen.
Well, they won't be in college toward it. For two residents.
Yeah, I mean, they're in Logan, they're in Logan City right now. And.
You expect that.
What was that?
You expect that.
All indications are that it will. To be honest, it's a little bit of a surprise to me that it's gone so smoothly, but it, it has so far.
This is progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say this would sound normal.
I was actually a little bit how disconnected.
Yeah, we've been in contact with their community development director, Mike Desimony, and he's been very cooperative in helping get, get this through on the Logan side. And, and I mean, the council so far has indicated support account, um, you know, on Logan's side. So anyway, there's that. Just wanted to mention, I've, I've been in talks. We, one of the goals this year was to develop in, in coordination with, with the Cache County and their countywide planner pro, planning program, Town Center Master Plan. I have been in talks with Brandon Bell, who's their countywide planner there. He's, he's relatively new, he's pretty new. And he's, he's excited to work on that. The Town Center. So, you know, we're talking about twenty, around 2600 South, 3200 South near, out near the highway. So Ridgeline Park is kind of within that area, but we're talking north and the areas near the intersections. We're, we're probably going to set up some, you know, a steering committee for that, that project. It's not, they're not a consultant. So I've talked to Brandon about this. It's, it's probably me, he and I, and maybe others on, on the county staff kind of sharing the workload. A lot of times on these kinds of projects, we, we, we contract with consultants, they go do it. In this case, you know, we're going to work together to, and use kind of each other's skillsets to, to come up with a master plan. And so anyway, if, if there, we probably want a couple of members of the planning commission on that, that steering committee. So if there's anyone that wants to say they're interested now, we can kind of put you the list if you want to think about it and send me a note. That's good too, but we'll, it's probably be a month or two until we really fully kick that off. We're kind of working on the scope of work and he's been doing a lot of homework to understand our community and, and the area and you know, a lot of, a lot of analysis there already, but we want, he just wants to get that background before, before he comes in and, and works on this. Anyway.
I'd be interested, Levi.
You'd be interested. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. I would.
Is that good?
Yeah.
No one, okay. Nick and Troy. And it'll, you know, it'll come to the planning commission. We'll probably come back a couple of times with updates. But, but the, the steering committee will, you know, help guide the process. So there's that. And then I wanted to mention, I, I sent an email on a couple of conferences coming up. Utah League of Cities and Towns is next week. Sound like Troy was going to go to that one.
This one on Thursday, Friday? Or Wednesday, Fri, Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah. Were you, were you going to go as well?
One day.
One day?
Yeah.
Are you going on Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to carpool, we can talk after the meeting if, if the times work, but, um, because I'm just going one of the days too. But, um, and then the APA conference, which is down in Provo is coming up. Karina, I think we had, we had you signed up for that, but if, if anyone else is interested, let me know. That one's in October. So.
What's the one in October?
It's the APA conference, I believe. Did you go last year? I can't remember. No, Garrett went. It's the American Planning Association, Utah Chapter. They, they, they do a lot of good training. And on Friday in particular, there's a track that's kind of devoted to primarily planning commissioners. I mean, they say citizen planners, but kind of planning commissioners. So it's a Thursday, Friday conference.
On the first of October?
It's like October 10th and 11th. Yeah. So if you're interested, let me know. I can get, I can get you signed up.
Yeah, like remote.
Yeah, it'd be nice. They don't.
Sure why they don't.
Yeah.
I'd be at all of them if they were remote.
It's like old school.
I think, I think they do a poor job at broadcasting it. So they shut, they've, they tried and they shut, and then they didn't do well and, but I agree. They do, they do quite a few, quite a few. They do a handful of webinars throughout the year that they usually broadcast that way. And unfortunately, yeah, the audio's not usually great. And if you're there in person, it's just better, but.
If it's a money issue, just charge on, to view it online.
Right, right. That's a good point of, point of feedback. Yeah, do it the old school way. Yeah, yeah, it'd be nice to be able to just pop in and see a few sessions and.
Record it and then view it later.
Yeah.
Utah Land Institute does that for their.
They do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we had some people view, I, I mean, I, I think I did. I think I viewed it from home and I think there are a few others here that did. They've got it figured out pretty good. And I think theirs is coming up actually. Utah Land Institute, they, they're also going to be in, I, I think in Sandy, but I think, I think it's also in October. So maybe I'll, I'll send that out. Thank, thanks for mentioning that Karina, because yeah, that they've got good training as well. So yeah, that's, oh, and our, just to give you an update, our, our, well, first of all, the Parks Master Plan, it, it was approved, so it has been adopted by council and the Active Transportation Plan are still working through that process, but probably three quarters of the way there. Getting, getting through that. There's just, there's one more steering committee meeting set and, you know, looking at finalizing recommendations and projects and so anyway. So you'll, you'll see that on an agenda in the coming, probably month or two.
Taylor, Chevy, Tom?
No, I need to bring up Levi here. He actually made application for Safe Streets for All.
Oh, right.
Some demo sites. So there, we're targeting, he did all the work. I say we, but I'm writing his coattails. But we're going to be targeting several locations on 3200 South, doing some studies before and after these applications of the treatments. And there'll be 10th West, 2600 South, 8th West. So.
3200 South.
Yeah. So we're looking at several of these intersections primarily to see how different applications like temporary bulb outs could help slow traffic down or something like that. Narrowing lanes or chokers or, or even a temporary rapid flashing beacon. He's applied for almost $350,000.
Wow.
And there's a little bit of match on our end. I think it's $60,000, but just kudos to, to Levi.
Yeah, hopefully we get the grant. We'll, we'll probably find out in November.
Oh, the ULUI conference is October 22nd through 23rd and it says, they're going to stream all sessions live on Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks Karina. Yeah. So let me know if you want to attend that one. I can send out the, the link so you can see the, you know, what sessions there are and whatnot. Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
The ULUI, Utah Land Institute.
I just had a feeling.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom's trying to rename Ridgeline Park Park.
The council's going to do that.
I guess if the planning commission is interested. We're, we're getting to a point, we need to call it something other than Ridgeline Park, City Park, or Ridgeline Park, Park, Park. Or City Park or Ridgeline Park. So I, I met with the Parks and Rec Committee last night and presented some exhibits of what the total build out would look like, kind of expressed, showed them what phase one and phase two looks like. All the trials and tribulations between wetlands and a certain U- Ladies Tresses, which is a microscopic tulip that's endangered that we're dealing with out there. So anyway, yeah, we, I went to them asking for a little bit of help in, in creating some names. So we, we talked, Rebound Park, just all kinds of things, Wright Park, spelled with a W. But anyway, hopefully we can bring something and ultimately you'll go to council for the, the final decision. But I wanted to bring a couple of recommendations from different parties there. Yeah. And, and I'm hoping to be under construction, at least breaking ground soon. That's all I'm saying, soon.
Yeah, I had no idea there's an endangered Irish lady.
Yeah. So I, I consider myself well versed in the U- Ladies Tresses now, and it's a, an endangered tulip. And it's really photogenic. It's beautiful, but it's only about that tall. And there's little teeny tiny tulip looking things that, that come on. It can lie dormant for 10 years. And it blooms for about 14 days, sometime between July and August. And we did find several populations out on, on site, which is good because had we not, we'd have to monitor those areas for two more years by the National Environmental Protection Act. Because it's federally funded, we have to follow all those environmental rules. So I've learned a lot. I have pictures if you want to see this, this little thing. Anyway.
Anything else from the council? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Maybe we should call the park, Snow Park. I think they owned that property before Ropelatos did. Snows.
Oh, Snow Park.
So, yeah. Well, Harris, I don't, Harris is, but.